Good afternoon, everyone. This is the June 1st, 2023 meeting of the Dyke Commission on Disability. We are at prime time this afternoon. It is at 4:35 PM. We can read the disclaimer first. We are, I don't know if somebody wants to read it out.
Yeah, I think we're stupid.
Thank you.
So we're live at prime time. We're also available via Zoom. This meeting is being recorded and can be viewed at a later date on the Town of Dyke YouTube channel.
Thank you very much. And the first order of business for again, anything else? Is if we could vice versa.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You're right, we're here on a gorgeous estate. I think we're good. So first order of business is to go, we go around the members who are here and introduce ourselves. We have two new members that have now joined. One of those members is on his way and should be here any moment. But we'll get started and then introduce him when we come. So we'll start with Kevin.
Kevin Smith, member.
Jonathan Schewski, member.
Jonathan Gale, ADA coordinator, chair.
Timothy Toulon, member.
Nicole Melo, Selectman Lea.
And then we have one more person, Chris Andrade, who should be here probably within the next two or three minutes. He's running a little bit late. And the next item.
Old business. New library building, open house and tour.
So under new business, under old business, excuse me, we had our library tour on the 13th of this past month. And all of us here were present from that one way or another, either representing the Commission on Disability or other committees in town as well. I'm pleased to say that I think we can all agree, we had a great turnout. We were able to get everyone who wanted to see the new library project go through. They were able to be given a tour and have their questions answered. We had several people who asked specific questions about accessibility for the new facility. That was also pointed out on the tour. I didn't hear any negative feedback or any negative commentary later when we had a lovely library building meeting about the accessibility component. Nicole, you were at that meeting as well.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't think you heard anything negative either.
No.
I did hear only positive in terms of people who were glad that it was going to be fully accessible. They love the children's area also being fully accessible. So I don't know if anybody has any other comments to add to that. But again, as I said, we were all there and different accents. And.
Hi.
Let me interrupt. We got a call saying that the alarm was activated in multiple zones.
It went off. I, I hit the code as soon as it went off, so.
You guys are good.
We're good, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's okay. At least we know that they show up and they work.
Yeah.
That's good. That's a good thing. So does anybody else want to add anything or have anything about?
No, I think it was a good, it had a good turnout. There was like almost 80 people that showed up that took tours, so that was good. And also, I didn't hear any negative feedback. Everything was positive. There were some good questions, you know, about the accessibility components, the funding components. So I think everybody had a great opportunity to get a lot of information about the project.
Yeah, it was really great to hear directly from the team doing the work and get to ask the questions.
And for any residents who will be viewing this, the town meeting for approval of the new town library and other items on the warrant. There are 27 items on the warrant as well. It is also going out of the mail for those of you who have checked your mail already. I got my copy yesterday. But the town meeting will be held this coming Monday, the 5th of January, 7:00 PM. And that will be at the Dyke Muhrowith Regional High School in the auditorium.
Awesome.
That's it. And the next item is.
Next one is continued conversation about ADA budget.
So there's not a lot to say about the budget at this point, except the budget was voted upon, Nicole, correct me if I'm wrong, but the overall budget was put, was quoted on to keep the same figure as last year.
I believe so, yes.
In essence, for the same parameters as last year, which would include any of the parameters for the expenditure of funds from the commission and also the payment for the ADA coordinator. And that total is about $5,000. Now it would be $5,060 roughly with the 2% difference. So that is part of one of the warrant articles to approve the budgets for the committees and commissions. I don't remember which number it is in front of me off the top of my head. It's not a separate warrant article. They're kind of all lumped together. And I'm hoping that, again, those of you who are able to attend will approve the budget for the COD so that we can continue the work in the next fiscal year that we've been doing in the past couple of fiscal years. And does anybody else want to add any comment or anything to add to that?
I just, if I remember correctly too, it leaves the commission itself around $500, correct? For any type of publication we want to do or.
That is correct, yes. It does, that is correct.
And we still, we still have a surplus of calendars, correct?
Yes, we do. In fact, we've got a bunch of those, probably about 300.
Are those on January to Jan, January to December for 2023?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Good. Yep, definitely. In fact, we give them, we give them, not as part of our input on the library day, when we had everybody turn the library as well. Yes, and next is.
Getting support of new library grants.
So the reason I put that in there is because I wanted to let everybody know that we have officially now received the notification that the $20,000 rural library grant was approved. We can officially take credit for another $20,000 going to support the project of the new library. And that grant is going to support ramps. It's going to support the electric doors. It's going to support technology, equipment, workstations, and workshops for people with disability as well. There are some other possible grants that I've looked at and had some conversation with Jocelyn about, which we're going to start visiting later this month. And that would be for more infrastructure as the library project goes forward, assuming it's approved. And that would be for shelving and different types of shelving. So if there are other areas that we need to look at to make them more accessible in children's area or an adult area for other types of things they might want to have access to. Could be copy machines, could be printers, things like that as well. If so, stay tuned. We're looking at more grants for the library and for other resources as well. And this would bring in some other disability workshops and resources as well. So a few things hopefully in the pipeline. Any other thoughts on any of that? Anyone?
No, just if, if new grant opportunities come up and you and Jocelyn can handle them, happy to.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think also, I remember stumbling across one that actually was from T-Mobile.
Yes.
But it was specifically for things of that nature.
That's correct. And actually, I have that full grant now. Jocelyn did send me that full grant and I've looked at that full grant. And that's one of the ones that we're going to start to attack.
Yeah, it has multiple funding rounds. Well, there are an open application period and there's multiple funding rounds. So it's kind of a good one.
Funding rounds for every quarter.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, I think it's good for everybody to kind of keep their eyes out. Because I literally, I think I scrolled across that on Facebook.
I know, I was just going to ask you, like, how did you come up with all that?
Yeah, well, you know how iPhones listen to everyone when we talk about.
Suddenly speaking.
I must have been talking about library grants. Because next thing you know, I was like, oh, T-Mobile's got a library grant.
So there's, there's that one. There's, there's another grant out there for services provided by the State Department of Elder Services. That's an up to $25,000 grant for elder programs with disability for public libraries. It's coming up shortly. There's another one for the Mass Commission for the blind. There's another one through another Commonwealth fund for local rural public libraries. It's different than what we just got as well. As long as they have an ADA component to them, we can put in for them. It doesn't mean that all of the dollars have to be necessarily for ADA specific compliance. But as long as there's a relationship to ADA compatibility, then we can put in for them. And that's not just for the library, that's for anything that the town needs. So there's a, I'm sure we could put together a long list that would fill the whole wall here of anything we'd like to look at that has somehow an ADA component to it. I've also spoken, for example, to Tom Ferry about some of the new street projects and some of the things coming up that he would like to look at and things.
Yeah, do we have like a running list of, of like either from Tom or maybe Mike, things that they want us to, because it would be nice to kind of have a direction of where to look. The library is a great direction, you know, that, that gives you kind of a universe to look in. But if there are other areas of town that would like, would like grant support, it'd be easier to kind of focus the search.
Yeah, to, to know what the pipeline of projects is.
I think this partly goes to when we get, when we get done and talk about reorganization too.
Okay.
Because I think this probably, I can probably answer that then in terms of where that stands and how that would look.
Okay.
So I think I'll hold up on that for helping.
I mean, as far as grants are concerned too, and also I, I believe we would be able to do it as a commission on disability members. I think it might be a little bit different for a town official. But this, a lot of local banks have, you know, like community outreach grants to support things like that.
A lot of local businesses, not just banks, like Modern's for an insurance agency. And I know that they give out grants for that kind of thing too.
They do, and it's, it's, it's just a matter of how it's cash and where it comes from.
Well, I think like especially like you, I wouldn't be like, oh, because I wouldn't reach out to them for a grant to build a ramp that we're essentially required to have. But if there's something that increases the inclusion and accessibility in the library, well, if it's a piece of technology that we otherwise might not be able to afford.
Yeah.
That's a great way to, to.
Or like a specialized piece of furniture or something like that.
Yeah, well, not a, not a, something required.
Something of, yeah. An example of that, which we didn't get to just because it turned out to be a very tight timeline and other, other things out of the way, was there was a RFP grant, which will come about again in about six months. And that grant was up to $50,000. That grant, if we had put in for it, would have been used, for example, to build a sidewalk out here that goes from here over towards the Bashi Court area. Also, I would have redone the ramp here potentially. So that's an example of other types of ramps that we still want to look at and visit now. But we'll have to determine whether they're going to be done through the commission or through the town or a combination of. But that's just an example of another grant that would have benefited the town in, in other ways. So because clearly this grant needs to be done as something like the ramp out here as, as well as that, as well as that also may, would have paved the way potentially part of that for a small transportation van or to purchase time for a pan transportation van for seniors who wanted to go other places rather than just medical appointments once or twice a week. So there's just different things to look at. And we can, we can, I'm hoping to start to get into some, look at some of the sources. I would like to see the commission on disability going forward, getting to doing more grants directly. I think we'd have a great opportunity for that, especially for local businesses. And that's all for that one for now.
All right, next up is new business. First thing is consumer services update.
So consumer services update. One of the things that I'm going to mention is at our last couple of Board of Selectmen meetings, one of, some, two residents, actually, we shouted the second one, but one of the first one, and talked about making sure they would like, in this case, one person was hearing impaired. For the second, last Board of Selectmen, the last one, there were two people who were hearing impaired. When I say hearing impaired, they were lip readers. One was somewhat hearing impaired, but both were lip readers. And what they said is they would like, would have liked it if the Board of Selectmen, I say this through to you, Nicole, to look into, was using the closed caption through Zoom, that component. That goes along with the training that I mentioned, I think, at our last meeting here, which I just completed a fairly extensive long training with the Mass Office on Disability on how to teach the different departments, managers, committees and commissions to use those different components.
So in a D A, I have questions. Was this people that were in the audience at the actual place?
These were.
Were these people on Zoom?
These were people on Zoom.
Can't they set up their own Zoom to have closed captions?
No, it's the responsibility of the town to provide it.
Okay, so if they, and everyone that's on Zoom can accept closed caption. Not that it's a problem, but I just want to understand.
So when a Zoom meeting is set up, the Zoom meeting will be set up so that the closed caption, the audio caption component of it comes across the bottom of the screen.
Yes.
So that they can read the verbiage just like that, that in front of the different people. So.
Jonathan, I just turned it on, on for this meeting because that's a great one. We should do that every time.
So.
So it has the capability already made?
Yes, yes, yes. I don't know if it shows up there in the monitor.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's like a little menu just down at the bottom here where you go to more. And it has captions. And then you just have to select what language you want the captions in, which I put it in English. And now it's typing out everything that I'm saying.
So now, so now everyone will see that. So that, that allows everyone to be disciplinary. Now, in the case of something like closed captioning, it's quite simple. In the case of other types of things that people may want for different parameters, accessibility to join a meeting, there's more to it. You know, the, the closed caption is one part of a, of a couple hour session. But this is an example of something that different committees and commissions in town should be providing to teach somebody how to flip that switch that changes put on is a simple process. But then the key factor is making sure that they're remembered to do it all the time or that the chair of the committee, the commission, you know, or any public meeting in town is reminding others, whoever's doing Zoom, make sure you put that on or knowing how to do it themselves. So it's a simple way to allow the public to have more fuller access to all of the meetings that are going on in town. And again, I've received, if I, if I put it all together, three requests. One at the first, second, the last meeting and two at the last meeting. I received emails from individuals noting that that wasn't on. That's my responsibility as well, but I'm going to, and I did send an email out to all the departments recently. You may have seen it as well, giving information on how to use some of these resources that was sent out at the end about two and a half, three weeks ago, which told all of the departments of the resources available and instructions on how to use everything. So now it's a matter of beginning to set up a schedule to teach everyone how to do it.
Can I ask a quick question? As far as, I mean, I think closed captioning on a Zoom meeting is, is pretty simple. Is there a timeframe as far as reasonable accommodations are concerned with like prior to a meeting, someone making a request?
So.
I mean, because obviously if somebody showed needs card services and they show up to the meeting, it's impossible to, unless we have, you know, a sign language interpreter.
So the, the answer to that question is there's no exact timeline to it anywhere. If we were in a large city like Boston, Worcester, Springfield, even Taunton, we would be expected to be able to provide card or interpretive services of any kind or any language on that within about a three day notice. Because even foreign language comes under ADA combination request. So we would be able to do it right away. They have the resources to do it very often in-house and they have people within different departments in the town that can provide that information or say. For us to do something like that, we have to go out of town. So for example, if somebody wanted card services or sign language interpreter, let's say for the town meeting coming up, we have to go through the Mass Office of Department of Area. Or if they wanted a, an interpreter for Spanish or Portuguese, I have to go to the appropriate state agency for that in order to set it up in advance. And when you're looking for interpreters, you don't just get a general sign language interpreter or for something, or a general language interpreter for something. Interpreters are specifically changed for the, trained for the type of work that they're doing. Legal, for example, medical, for example. So you have to look at the specifics. Also, it's the cost involved. If we're going to be putting together card services for a person, we generally want a 10 day notification because of what we have to set up. Because if you have card services or interpretive services or language services, each individual who you have as an interpreter works for a half hour, then switches off to another person. So you need at least two, sometimes three, depending upon what it might be and no one. But you're paid, if they're there for three hour meeting, each person's getting paid for three hours. If you have card services with a stenographer, they're getting paid for the three hours and they have to switch off. So one meeting could become expensive. One meeting minimally would probably be four to $600. It could easily go to $1,000 or $1,200 for example, a town meeting.
How's that get funded?
It's the responsibility of the Board of Selectmen to provide the funds. You have a legal requirement. Can't say no.
And then also in regards to translating for language, now this might not be helpful for like a whole meeting or something. But if we had to speak with a resident one-on-one, the health department didn't receive some kind of translator device. I haven't got to see it or do anything with it, but it came through emergency preparedness. Our coalition through that. So we do have something that could help, like I said, more of a one-to-one basis. I don't think you could utilize it during a whole meeting. And I don't know that much about it yet.
No, and the, and the EP device that you're referring to is based to some extent to artificial intelligence and translation. It's almost like a Google product you use. And again, it's also not an exact science.
No.
So, and, and it's limited in languages.
But if we were on a tight schedule or whatever, it's better than.
It's better than not.
Some of not being able to communicate something.
Yeah, if somebody came into town hall, for example, to ask a question.
Right.
And they went to the town clerk and Mark couldn't help them because of the, the language difference or something like that, he should know how to have access to that or he should know how to contact me so that I can arrange, if necessary, at another time for a person to come in and work with that person and Mark can be the interpreter. But again, it depends on what it is. You know, if, if somebody's coming in town and asks a legal question about something for their, even if it's just their assessment, that's considered a legal question for their bill of assessment. So it has to be somebody who's skilled in legal interpreting or legal translation. So there's different ways to do it. But again, right now, as far as I know, because I've never been told otherwise when I've asked, there technically is no money that the town has set aside for interpretive services or card services or sign language services. So this is something that the town ultimately, the Board of Selectmen is going to have to either pull from their own funds, the Board of Selectmen's fund, or allocate when the request comes through. Now suppose the request came through for the next Board of Selectmen's meeting. And that's in less than 10 days. But if we can provide it, it has to be provided. We can't wait for the Board of Selectmen to meet and approve it. So the Board of Selectmen would simply have to allow it, allow it to happen, allow me to set it up as the coordinator. You're going to get the bill and I'm assuming those under $1,500 is going to get approved. If it's more than $1,500 or whatever, it's going to go to the boss for approval. But it still has to be paid.
One thing we may want to consider is establishing some sort of disclaimer, at least on the town website, just regarding card services in general. I mean, you, you have to have some sort of parameter where it, you give yourself enough time to provide that.
You do.
So I think, you know, I don't.
I know that we have the disclaimer that says if you needed contact, contact the ADA coordinator. But it doesn't specifically indicate how much time. And I have asked in the past to put some information in on how much time. But again, we haven't gotten to that point. I haven't, I haven't answered back on whether we can do that or not. So maybe that's something that we can visit with the town administrator and the Board of Selectmen. But it should be updated if you need such and such approved device, so many days' notice. And that should be, that should actually be on every page that has a relationship to any committee or commission in the town, frankly.
Yeah, it could even just be printed on every posted agenda.
It's, it's supposed to be on the bottom of every single agenda that goes out, actually.
Yes, it does say it, I apologize.
So I know it's on, it's on hours and it's on the bottom of Zoom as well. So.
Yeah, we just think that's, we just should have a discussion about timeline, that's all.
Yep, no, you're right. I agree. Any other, Chris can.
Chris is here, yes.
Sorry, congratulations for being here.
Yeah, yeah. I tried to, I tried the other two doors, like.
Oh, no.
No, I was like, no, it's not in here, I guess.
No, don't worry about it. So what, just what we did is we start the meeting after we do the pledge of allegiance. Everybody just goes through and says who they are, introduces themselves. So we've done that. Tim did that as well. You are the second new member, so I will officially say welcome and getting here. And for the record, if you could just say who you are, your name, that's really all we're doing. And if you have any relationship to anything in town, yeah?
Christopher, mainly just kids sports.
Thank you. And we're just going through the.
And we're on new business, yeah. Uh, next up is reorganization of the Commission on Disabilities.
So the reason I put this in there, and this segues into what you were asking about advances a little bit too, is when I first became the ADA coordinator for the town, in my capacity as putting things together, we didn't have a Commission on Disability yet. So when I was first working with Mallory Aaronstein, our previous town administrator, and we were forming the Commission on Disability, the intent of Mallory and the intent of me especially was, once the commission was up and running and became, became established and well-formed, was to no longer be in a dual role. That would be the chairperson of the Commission on Disability and the ADA coordinator for the town. There potentially can be some conflicts on how things are done or what needs to be done or what direction or who direction, whose direction I'm working under or receiving requests to do things from. And sometimes they can be contrary to one another. And the other side of it is that the commission should be its own separate entity, allowed and able to do, whether it's looking at grants in some cases, whether it's telling the town or asking the town to do certain types of things that the town may or may not want to do. And this is for any town, by the way, not just Dyke. Or getting in, getting into other resources that they want to get into. If they want to get into the schools, if they want to get into equipment or technology. Sometimes being the coordinator and the chairperson is conflicted in terms of how I take direction, who I take direction from. It's like that for anybody in this position who has to. So the goal was that once the commission was established, I would step away as the chair of the commission. Having said that, I've been the chair of the commission now for more than three years. It's been established for over three years now. During that time, we've gotten our bylaws through the Board of Selectmen in the town meeting. The bylaws have been approved by the Commonwealth, which I think is great as well. And with the commission's support and the support of the town, we've done a lot of work, I think, for the town. All of us have resources, fundraising, grants, et cetera. But now it's time for Jonathan to step back. And although I'm not submitting my resignation at this meeting yet, one way or another, at the next meeting, depending upon a couple of other things and how they play out, including a town meeting, my goal is to no longer potentially be the chair of the Commission on Disability. I will either be a member of the Commission on Disability or I will just be the coordinator for the town, one of the two. Jury still, I don't have a little bit yet and where that's going to go. But my goal after this meeting will be at our next meeting to let you all know that that will be the last meeting. I will be president for part of the meeting. And then you'll all have the opportunity to elect another person as the chairperson of the, of the Commission on Disability. Clerk.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Kevin is under his breath saying clerk, which indicates to me that Kevin would like to be in that position.
So anyway, I just, that's where I'm coming from now. But the reason I said this segues into the grant process as well is because there are some grants that we can look at that are, you know, through the town that have come, that we have to, we have to do through the town and at the town administrator or the person who has the authority for the town to submit. And that could be things related to roads or sidewalks, street, street cuttings, curvatures, things like that. Those are things that I would have to sign off on and, and submit as our procurement officer. There are other types of things that the commission may want to submit grants to, to private organizations, foundations, philanthropists, other community minded folks in the area, fundraisers setting up, you know, charitable contribution proponents and so forth as well. That would not necessarily have anything to do with me as the coordinator or the town. And then this also allows potentially for the Commission on Disability, if there are certain things you want addressed, I would still be coming to every meeting if I'm only the coordinator. And you would be asking Jonathan or whomever the coordinator is to do X, Y and Z. Or you would be saying to the town administrator on behalf of the commission, we would like the coordinator to do X, Y and Z. And then you guys discuss it and I'm doing what I'm told or whoever it is is doing what they're told. So I think it gives the commission the ability to really do a lot more for the community in a lot of ways. But I also think it gives the coordinator a lot more of an opportunity to focus on other things that even the commission feels really need to be focused on that they've determined that with the town administrator. So I don't know if anybody has any thoughts or any questions on that this minute.
Just my only question for you, Jonathan, is you said it remains to be seen whether you'd be a member or just the ADA coordinator. Is that because, who determines that? Is that your decision?
So whether I'm the coordinator or not is determined by the town.
Sure.
And as I noted earlier, there is a warrant article to keep the funding for towns, the town commissions and different committees at the same level less than 2% increase. And that includes COD. That also includes the very small stipend for the person who is the coordinator of the Commission on Disabilities or for the town. I use that term point forward. So whoever is the coordinator of the town is going to get that stipend at this point. So that's the reason I put it that way.
Well, and also there, there isn't a definitive job description for the ADA.
Exactly, that was just my point. Say that there is a rough job description that I, as the coordinator, have been working on for the past few years. And that job description needs to be more defined. The town administrator and I have agreed to sit down and talk about that the next two weeks or so and look at the, the job description specifically and how it needs to be changed or should be changed. And I'm in agreement that there are some things that need to be changed with that so that there's, the role is, is more clearly defined. If we're in agreement on that and if I choose to stay in the position and if that position is still offered to me, which so far I have no reason to say you would think it wouldn't be, then I would still stay in that role. If I choose to stay in that role, then when I step down, I would be stepping down as a member and as chair. If I'm no longer going to be in the position of the coordinator of the town or choose not to be the coordinator of the town, then I would submit, like anybody else, an application as a volunteer to be a member of the commissions. then I would submit, like anybody else, an application as a volunteer to be a member of the commissions.
Got it. Thank you.
Hope that cleared.
It does.
Clarify. Any thoughts, any questions? Anyone? No, okay.
Review in a group minutes for five, four, twenty-three.
You got them in there? Yeah, I listened to them last night.
Yeah.
They were good.
I don't know. Do you have to make a motion?
Yeah, and our two new members, you gentlemen cannot vote on this yet because you were not scoring by the town as of yet for this last one. So going forward, yes, you will.
So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the five, four, twenty-three Commission on Disability.
A second. Any discussion? Nope. Eric and Kevin, aye? Jen?
Aye.
Jonathan stepping down, aye?
Okay, next up, we have public input.
Anybody have anything first that they would like to share on their public input?
We have a couple people here live and then it looks like Woody's on on Zoom. Anybody have public input?
Can I share one thing quick? Not to interrupt the public, but just for anybody that may be out there on Zoom. That they, the David Council on Aging had announced the other day that they're providing transportation for anyone over the age of sixty that needs it for annual town meeting, but you do need to reserve your seat by ten at ten AM on Monday morning. And you can do that by contacting Laura at five zero eight eight two three zero zero nine five. I think that was a great thing for them to put together and provide rides for some of our older citizens who typically don't drive at night and can't get to the meetings. So thank you to them for for doing that work.
And thank you for for remembering to put that plug out there for it.
Yeah, and that information is also on the CRB page for the for the town. Thank you, Kevin.
Any other public input?
Hey, Robert Woods, how you doing?
Thanks, how are you?
Good. I'd just like to welcome the new members and I'd like to thank your entire commission for all the work that you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
All right, next on the agenda is just approving the next three meeting dates. We have July sixth, August third, and September seventh. And I am good for those dates.
I am good for three of those dates if I am still a part of the Commission on Disability. I will be joining the meeting in July, either way by Zoom. I will not physically be here. I'm going to be in Idaho. So one way or another, I will be.
What will you be doing? Idaho?
I hope you don't be, I'm hoping you don't be, thank you. I can tell you this, Idaho, yes. Yes, I'm probably not a lot of potatoes too. But I will be out there for the month of July for the most part, so. I will be joining you all by Zoom for that. The other thing that I'm going to mention, just so I don't forget, for our new members is right now, and I I need to put some things in and clean it up quite a bit over the next two weeks and finish that because I've got the draft of that put together, is we use right now Dropbox as our method for sharing information and posting information together. So that all of the members are familiar with what goes on, and that would be for minutes, notes, back information, back minutes, agendas, et cetera, et cetera. And lots of other things, volunteer applications, yours will be in there, for example, in the next couple of days. And lots of other things that go in there. I don't know if both of you are familiar, Chris and Tim, with using Dropbox or not.
Yeah.
Or if you're comfortable using that. If you want, I can send you both a link for it, and then I can probably, once you upload the link, if you have Dropbox on your computer already.
Timeline.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can walk you through it pretty quickly and pretty easily. And if you want it done visually, I'm assuming one of the other members could help you do it. I mean, I know what to do. I just can't see it. I can tell you.
Yeah, it's very easy to find, I think.
It's very friendly.
And there is an app for your phone. I just wrote a note for myself because I don't have it on my phone yet, but I want to get the app on my phone.
And I have the app on my phone too, and it's very easy to use as well. It's just as easy as the phone, but it allows us all not only to get information that we're all posting collectively, but to share information in real time. So going forward, if there are documents we're working on and somebody's looking at that document, for example, if the commission is working on grants together and you're looking at the grant section and you're making changes to it, you can work on it in real time together. If you have a subcommittee, we're just sharing with each other. And that's the best way to do it. And I think for me, as a person who has disability, who is blind, it is fully accessible, which is why I like it. Google Drive is not fully accessible for a person who is blind, and it's very difficult to use, actually. So if both of you have no objection, then I will make sure you guys get a link. It's going to be in the next couple of days. And then in there, you'll find everything. Once you get it, take a look at it, get back to me with any questions you have. But you'll see everything from our bylaws in there, state procedures, you'll see links to other state resources, other towns' resources, things like that too. So again, there's.
The KMA report, which is.
Yeah, the KMA report is very long. That's the original evaluation that we had done from the Commonwealth and the grant that we got from Mass Office of Disability. And that's led us to some of the things that we've already done. So to the new technology we have at town hall, the website, the walkways for the parks, a number of other things. I'm not going to go into everything again right now. But I would suggest both of you, if you want some really good, sometimes boring, but certainly informational reading, you know, make a few minutes here and there and put some time into it because it's going to help you understand going forward other things that we still need to do or you need to do as a commission. I would just, I would say focus on that as much as you possibly can because that's what I do. The other thing I just wanted to do was just to get a sense from you, Chris, and you, Tim, of you know, if you have general ideas or things that you think are important going forward, I know when you were both interviewed, you talked about your thoughts for the school system and so forth, and the things that should be changed or looked at or going forward. We all know there's the proposal was just the initial proposal letter that the school superintendent sent out to the Commonwealth to see if we can get on the list for potential new future elementary slash middle schools. That would certainly be something that this commission would want to have a stakeholder role in one way or another. But I'm just curious if either of you have any certain types of ideas or projects that you think are really important to the town, just for everybody to hear about and think about going forward?
Not at this time, but I'd like to, you know, get inside the school. I've been in the middle school. I've been in the elementary school. I don't think I've ever been in the high school. So I have to really get in and look at that first.
And are there other, as a relation to the town, are there other things that jump out at you or things that you think in general as a not just as a school person and as a teacher, but as other things in town that you think or no, just no ideas yet?
Not at this time, no.
Yeah, mine mine tends to be more around accessibility for wheelchair and just different able wanting to see that expand, especially within our communities. I feel like we can be a leader in the neighboring communities and, you know, what better place to start than Dyton?
Couldn't agree more.
Absolutely right.
Jonathan, do we need a motion to approve these dates?
Yes, we do.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the next three meeting dates of July sixth, August third, and September seventh.
Second. Any discussion? Eric and Kevin, aye? Jen?
Aye.
Stepping down, Jonathan.
Okay. I think we have a standing the first Thursday. I don't think we need to do that, just.
Only if like, I think only if we move it, right? Like if we were like this month, we're not going to do it on the first, we're handling it on the second.
I pretty much just put it there because as they get posted to the town.
I was just thinking, yeah, like Jen said, unless we're changing a date for a reason, we don't need to motion it. On that note, I will make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that motion.
You don't need discussion of the motion to adjourn, Kevin?
Aye.
Aye.
Stepping down, Jonathan. Well, you can.
Well, yeah, they can vote.
They can vote. They can vote on the minutes.
They could. So Chris?
Aye.
Oh, oh, that's.
You got it. It's all right.
Aye.
Yes.
Super exciting for this June meeting. Thanks all. Appreciate coming in.
This is a very quick, relatively quick meeting, just to. You guys.